Welcome to the Planning Committee meeting for this evening. I think everybody's here. We've already done apologies for the previous meeting and we don't know what we've received. So what we've got is it. On the 58623, declarations of any disclosureable pecuniary interest.
What about not pecuniary? No?
Yes.
The planning application, I know. Yeah, I can say it now.
Okay. You seem to know every one of these. That's all right. We've had 58723, apologies for absence. Those who've already left. 58823, minutes. Confirm the minutes of the Planning Committee meeting held on the 12th of December 23 as a true record and signed by the committee chairman. Are we all content to agree on the minutes from that meeting? You're tasked to see them. I should do that now before I forget. More planning. Is that one? Okay. Right. 58923, planning applications to consider. To consider would be the following applications. Plan number 0003, which is 41 Coney Cliffs. You've got that up on the board there behind you as well. Proving that there's no skill to this because Stuart's done it straight away. It took me a couple of weeks. So any comments at all on that? You'll have a chance to look at the application. So fairly straightforward, I think. There is an extension, but I don't think it's out of keeping. Any thoughts?
Extension, yeah.
So it shows on the plan, it's at the back. My focus will read.
It says extend in the rear end of garage.
Yeah.
I mean, I don't know the legalities of it, but is it within the within the range of what is allowed?
So this is really poor because you've got the existing page if you just go on to the next one. So if we flick between the two really quickly, you can just see the difference in the extension. So the existing at the top there on the side elevation. You go back again, sorry. It's like when those games used to do with the corner of the play. But it's probably the easiest way to see it because I think they did this deliberately so that you don't see them side by side.
Looking at the picture on the side of the house, it's someone's driveway on the right and there's someone's driveway on the left.
Can you just go in a bit closer on that? So just on the plus bit down the bottom here, on that one, if you want to go in closer there. It's not as easy as it looks, is it? And just grab it and pull it across. Another one. The main screen.
No problem.
There you go.
The extension will be below the height of the boundary wall. It's not going to be visible from the road, is it?
No.
So is it inside permitted development rules or because it's not? Is that why there's not for planning permission?
If it was in permitted development rules, it would be on the agenda.
Yeah, right. You're not going to see it, are you then?
I mean, I'll be honest, if you've been around there, all the houses are quite tight. You know, and there's not a great deal of room for manoeuvre.
But you're not going to see that extension, are you?
No, and if you look on the plan, it's really small on them. It doesn't look that much closer to the edge really. There's no overlooking windows that are put in. You know, it's not gone any higher, so. So thoughts, are we content with that to go through? I'll take it by the science then that we are. Do we need to vote on these?
Some of us like to have a vote, some don't. Some are not first.
Okay, so. So are those four? Any against? Okay, that's carried. That's probably the easiest way to do it. I'd rather everybody have a say. Right, thank you. On to the second one. Sorry, Stuart, sorry, is here 17 Limecurn Lane.
This is the second time it's come.
Yes, right. So this one you will have seen before. So plan number 0726, a proposed single story commercial building, Class E, the commercial business and service. It's got a new cycle storage building and land to the rear of 17 Limecurn Lane. So this is next to Aldi for those who recognise it.
It's mixed Aldi, but it's not Aldi.
No, it's not. So how's the easiest way for me to explain it? So that's Aldi there. This is the charity shop. Cycle path is there and all this bit here is dead ground. If you've seen it recently, it was really badly designed. This is the proposed commercial building. So it's in a lean to off to the side. And importantly, there's an entrance, a main entrance on that piece. Now, the reason that's important because both of the bins at the back. So this will be up before. It has been up before, but it's slightly changed.
Do we know what the commercial business is? Or is that relevant?
It's not really, but if you, again, if you look on the diagrams on there, it shows you an open plan sort of office layout inside.
What's different in this one compared to last time again?
I don't think it had cycle.
The cycle storage was at the bottom closest to Grove Lane. Put it on the sides.
Yeah.
More visible and sort of overlooked, which is an improvement for the cycle store.
Okay.
I remember that the storage had been down the bottom.
That's right, yeah. So it was down here instead. I mean, it's not a massive difference in change. The concerns we had before was about access to bins, making sure that they didn't end up on the outside of the building as we've had in previous meetings. Our comments last time were, we're a supporter. However, the town council has security concerns about the cycle racks as the area is one of high pedestrian football and they should be overlooked by residents and not passersby. We didn't even mention the bins last time, which is bad. So they have moved them into site.
The other changes, the historic buildings consultant hasn't changed their comments, so they have no objection. The environmental health officers have new object or their new comments is that they haven't changed on where they submitted comments in August. And all they've done is they've just actually taken into account environmental issues around the housing restrictions on air conditioning, hours of trading, so that the residents surrounding that particular area aren't impacted by any commercial activity. And that condition they've still kind of supported.
So as well as access through the main part of the building, there's access is also that's the existing wall out onto the road and there's also access down the side.
What can that do with the bins? Reduce access to the bins?
No, I don't think it will reduce access. Whether they use it or not is another thing. Because on the diagram there, they've still got the bins marked up as being at the back. Any other questions?
The bins or the residential bins.
The residential bins at the back.
From the flats above the superstore.
Because all the access is on the end currently. You can see the access and that the tall part of the lean to is where people are going to get in and out of there now. So they will have an enclosed front door, if you like. So any other comments on that at all? Any concerns? Right. So are we content to, those again, those four, sorry? Any against? We're four. We've mentioned it a couple of times. Is it worth mentioning the bins at all? I think as we, as the town gets more developed, we see more areas closed off and access to bins gets harder and harder. Is it worth agreeing and noting that we would like to see the bins remain stored out the rear of the building? Because that is, as you said, there's a footpath going alongside of Aldi.
There's also a far off there for the shopping. If they start putting them out in front, it's getting up like that here. It's a nice one. There's also a concern for the guys to come and empty the bins as well. You know, that is making it harder.
Well, so in theory, that's like your own property where you've got the bins out in the back. Bring them out the front for the day.
They'll probably leave them there.
Yeah, but the point for us, I think, is that we don't end up with permanently having bins out the front. They should be returned to the bin storage area.
High traffic for pedestrians becomes very uncycled. Grease smells as well. People won't be very keen on it.
Okay.
They can be tucked away as best.
So we're in agreement that we support that, but would like the bins to remain to the rear of the building.
Through to the book.
Yeah, and not on the pathway. 141 Fairfields. Okay, thank you. Plan number 1205, first floor extension and some internal alterations. So you'd probably best see this on when that picture comes up. Fairfields doesn't look like that, does it?
That would, that would.
Yeah. I think if you just scroll out a little bit on the minus here, you might be able to see it. It might have got too close. Ah, no, just click back into the layers on the left downside at the bottom. That's the one, yeah. Perfect. That's the existing. So you're looking at the existing plans as they currently are. Just forward one, thank you. And that's what is existing now. Did you go forward or backwards? You went backwards, didn't you?
So that's existing internal plan.
Yep.
And then I go forward. Two. They have to keep moving. And there's the proposed from the internal perspective.
Sorry, can you just go up again so we can see the differences?
Has it said on the narrative anywhere what the purpose of the change is? I know there's been a number of Fairfields properties turning into HMOs, isn't there?
It just says first floor extension and internal alterations. So, and again, they've done this thing where they've carefully moved the plans skewer. So it's not immediately obvious what the changes.
Well, they pulled the front of the house out.
No. That's just to see if I can sit better on here.
For the same, basically, we are seeking to obtain planning permission to construct a first floors extension built partly over an existing porch building and the remaining part would be supported by a 138mm steel post. This will give much needed extra space in the bathroom as existing areas, but as standard.
Still want to go on top of the garage, don't they?
Right, I can see it now. It's difficult to see. So on here, you can see that you've got a toilet there. If you click forward, please, Alan. And what you've got now is where they've extended out and you've now got the two knocked in together. So they've just made a bigger bathroom on that piece over the porch.
But if it's over the porch, it'll be at the front of the house and it will distort the line of the properties.
And it'll be, if I'm correct, the garages, the next door garage will be linked to that garage as well. So it's not a full structure built with the garages and they would need support. They've extended out over the bedroom as well. Level with that bathroom.
Yeah, it looks like they had.
Actually, the easiest way, it's quite difficult to see the difference. So if you can go to the, level with the porch and go straight up. Okay, so there's a porch as it is. Go on again, please, Alan. Again. So there's the porch now. Actually, that bit you're talking about later, the front of the building is really quite a block. And if you look at it from the side. Okay. That's what we've got there. So there again, a view from number 139. That's what you've ended up with, a big block on the front.
So that window there, that would be the bathroom. Over the downstairs window at the front, they've put a metal beam, a support post. And then put like a block on upstairs, like a metre or whatever, by most of the width of the house. But it's not over the neighbour's property because the gap being the side, it's not going fully over the garage. I think that looks okay. It gives me protection when you go to your front door. But this goes along there, that joins the neighbours, it's a joint roof. So if you put something on top of that, then someone's got to support that bit, hasn't it? Am I correct in thinking that? That's down to the architect, isn't it?
It is. I think the internal is fine. It's just perhaps the street view is awful.
Do we have any opinions from the neighbour on each side?
Nothing.